Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Certainly Chairwoman. Commissioner Baker.
Present.
Commissioner Bodak.
Here.
Commissioner Dellisfort.
Present.
Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Here.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet.
Here.
Chairwoman, please let the record reflect, you have nine Commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Thank you. Clerk of the Board, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly, we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read the Statement of Compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 with the Office of the County Clerk.
May I have a motion to approve the communications?
No move now, Chair.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Leon. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak.
Yes.
Commissioner Dellisfort.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Aye.
Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Chairwoman, you have nine votes in the affirmative on the communications.
Thank you. Tonight, we have one ordinance for adoption. The Union County Utilities Authority implements the Union County District Solid Waste Management Plan. The UC UA is empowered to enter into contracts for the processing, disposal, and/or recycling of solid waste throughout the county in an environmentally sound manner. The following public hearing involves an ordinance to amend the Union County District Solid Waste Management Plan with respect to a contract between the UC UA and Waste Management for disposal services at facilities located in Elizabeth. The UC UA's executive director, solid waste council, and authority engineer are present to answer questions. Clerk of the Board, please read the ordinance for adoption by title.
Ordinance number 849-2024, an ordinance to modify the Union County District Solid Waste Management Plan to include the Waste Management of New Jersey Inc. facilities in Elizabeth, New Jersey as the county's designated facilities to which solid waste types 13, 13C, 23, and 27 are directed for disposal, to incorporate the solid waste disposal services agreement by and between the Union County Utilities Authority and Waste Management of New Jersey Inc. for the provision of disposal services for solid waste types 13, 13C, 23, and 27, and three, direct all solid waste types 13, 13C, 23, and 27 to the Waste Management of New Jersey Inc. facilities in Elizabeth, New Jersey for disposal pursuant to regulatory waste flow control.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the meeting to the public for the purpose of commenting on ordinance 849-2024 only. Kindly state your name and town of residence for the record and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Good evening, Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board. Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. On occasion over the many years, I mean, this type of ordinance has showed up. I never really got into the weeds as to what this is, but I guess for the public's understanding, could somebody please explain what waste types 13, 13C, 23, and 27 are specifically, and can these actually be handled by the incinerator in raw way? And I guess lastly, I guess an explanation of how the cash flow works about this, because obviously disposing this waste would cost money, so how does the payment come about? And how much did we look at last year for disposal of the waste with Waste Management? Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Can you please come up to the mic, name for the record where you're with, or I don't know. My name is John Appolitano. I am the county's UA's Solid Waste Council. With regard to his first question about bulky, what the types are, type 13 is bulky waste, that's large items of waste, such as appliances, furniture, discarded automobiles, trucks, trailers, and other large vehicles and tires. 13C is construction and demolition waste. That would be waste rubble resulting from construction, remodeling, demolition from houses, commercial buildings. It's asphalt, bricks, rocks, that kind of stuff. 23 is vegetative waste, which is waste from farms, plant nurseries, grade houses. 27 is dry industrial waste, which is waste products that are non-hazardous resulting from the manufacturing, industrial, and research and development processes within the area. So the way the money flows, which is your other question, is that the money flows from the corridor, it usually goes to what's called a MRF. The MRF then will take out what's recyclable, and then what's left that they can't recycle, they deliver to Waste Management. This is the same arrangement we've had for the last five years. The reason we have to have a hearing is that contract ended and we've bid... Okay, sure. So, it was my fault looking at the guy who asked the question. So, the money flows from the MRF to Waste Management. There is an administrative fee that goes to the UA to help pay its costs, but the majority of the money, and like I said, goes to Waste Management since they are the ones taking care of the waste. This waste cannot be incinerated as it is big bulky waste generally. So if there's any other question?
Seeing no one else, I will formally close this portion of the meeting and ask UC UA Liaison Commissioner Granados to move ordinance 849-2024 for final reading and adoption.
Thank you, Chair. I move ordinance number 849-2024 for final reading and authorize the Clerk of the Board to advertise same in accordance with the law.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Granados, a second was made by Commissioner Mirabella. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak.
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisfort.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Commissioner Chair, you have nine votes in the affirmative for ordinance number 849-2024.
Thank you. This meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Kindly state your name and town of residence for the record, and if speaking on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring and adhere to the five-minute time limit. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. You can wrap up. Yes. Thank you for being here. We're going to just continue on, but take your time.
I mean, I'll wait. I know you guys are anticipating what you want. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board and the various Golden Nuggets. This is Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. I'll open my public service, I'll open my statement with a public service announcement since a state comptroller has now become aware of questionable practices of the Union County Government. It should be noted that anyone, if anyone feels something is not right or works in a toxic environment by our county's governance, there is a means of people and employees to anonymously share info to the public authorities for compilation. On free time, one can anonymously either call the comptroller's office with any information, no matter how small, at 855-672-8477, or email comptrollertips@osc nj.gov. That's spelled comptrollertips, C-O-M-P-T-R-O-L-L-E-R-T-I-P-S. It doesn't have to be a smoking gun, it can just be circumstantial evidence for them to review. So whistleblowers do have the power. As to the previous meeting where Commissioner Granados lectured me condescendingly about the county at the end of the meeting, one statement he noted was the hiring of County Manager Oatman. The takeaway here is that Granados, by his own specifics, is that Oatman was hired only because of who he knows. We know he had no experience in administering any number of employees and not even at least even close to half a billion dollar budget, but such is New Jersey politics and this corrupted government system of the state. Granados' further lecture was that the public should show a little respect. This I find ridiculous coming from him. What he may not know is that respect must be earned and is based on integrity. Once the public found out that Granados had taken away the opportunity of four good county jobs for potential residents and instead got his relatives into those jobs as patronage, he lost all integrity and respect, in my opinion. Ask yourself, how can a boss fire a Commissioner's relative if he is goofing off? In fact, years back, he was plucked from obscurity by a political boss and plopped down as a freeholder with no experience or background, just a carpetbagger. He then wants to buy respect with a half a billion dollars of tax money. Respect does not work that way. And one last comment. Regarding the county tax increase we face, I find this ridiculous since the two top people that contrive this budget and tax increase do not even live in the county and so are immune to what havoc they wreak. To the resolutions. Reso 210 is giving French and Parello Associates $220,000 for HVAC engineering and consulting services. This makes no sense. Please explain the details as to why and where we need heating and cooling consulting services to the tune of nearly a quarter million dollars. How about just fix what is broken? Reso 222 is another quarter million dollars expenditure to Lake Management Sciences for providing an aquatic management program. This sounds to me like paper shuffling and pamphlets and no direct work, which doesn't justify the cost. Please explain the details to the public of what the program is about. Reso 220-231, please have the county clerk explain what Andy Kim has to do with our county and why are we spending $20,000 to the law firm of Genova Burns, which sounds like it's way too much for whatever it is. Reso 232 is giving the Taylor Law Firm $15,000 for council services for leasing county cell towers. It's not enough we pay one of the county's $300,000 Golden Nuggets Finance Chair Bibby Taylor, but now we start flowing more money to her husband. Reso 233, this one is certainly bizarre, it was previously discussed by the gentleman from the Union County College, and we want to give part of our ARPA reserve a quarter million dollars to Union County College to fund food insecurity of needy full-time students of the college. And this is only for six months, per the reso. Did anyone ask actually how many needy students are involved and from which campuses they are? I mean, this is very strange. I mean, we're giving them, I don't know these needy people, but we're giving them food from kindergarten all the way up to 12th grade, and now we're going into college and we're paying them also for the food. It doesn't make sense. I mean, are we going to, are we going to be carrying these people for the rest of their lives? You act like it's free money to spend willy-nilly with no accountability. I really ask you to vote no on this one.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much.
More than enough.
Seeing no one else, I will formally close that portion of the meeting. Sorry. To speak on Resolution 210, I would like to call upon Joe Polakay.
Do you, Chairman?
Thank you.
The replacement of various pieces of equipment, of HVAC equipment, including the new annex, Cherry Street, Fire Academy, Galloping Hill, Police Academy, and Public Safety Building.
Thank you. Resolution 222, Director Durbin Drake.
Thank you, Chair. This is a public bid that we strive to maintain control of the nuisance, weeds, and algae in all of our lakes, ponds, and lagoons. We have 29 of them in our 36 parks and golf courses. It's a two-year contract, it is not to exceed, so they have to bid on what might be the maximum. Last year, we spent $43,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In regards to Resolutions 231, 232, and 233, I'll call upon County Manager Oatman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For 231, what does Andy Kim have to do with the county clerk's office? Well, he named her in lawsuits, so that's why you hire a lawyer to defend you. So you should probably ask Andy Kim why he wanted to name the clerk. For 232, the law firm was retained in a fair and open process. Director Taylor has no involvement in the firm, but I know we couldn't get through a meeting without you bringing up Director Taylor, so good job. For 233, actually, yes, we actually do feed people throughout their whole lives if they need. The Department of Social Services has, you should go see the line, they have SNAP benefits, it goes on until you can't, until you acquire the resources to be able to be self-sufficient, or the government is actually there to help you whether you are in grade school, or college, or an adult. I know you'd be opposed to such a thing, but there is a great need at the college. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Granados.
Thank you, Chair. Just to add on to 233, you know, we talk about respect and having respect for others, and we continuously see how you, Mr. Patterson, have no respect for individuals, talking about how are we going to continue to supply funding to help out individuals when they're in need, when it comes to financial resources of receiving a lunch, where many of these students, sometimes this is the only healthy meal they get, or only meal they get, not even just healthy, just in general meal they get. Maybe you're somebody who never went through that whole process in needing a meal, but there's many individuals who in our county, who are not just students, who are young individuals, who are adults, who are seniors, who can benefit from those type of resources and who do benefit from those resources. So for you to come up here and say, are we going to provide funding for them from elementary to high school, and we're going to continue on into college and provide them funding, is a complete lack of respect and extremely disrespectful to every single student and every single resident of the County of Union, because one of the most important things we do as a county, we do as residents, we do as elected officials, is making sure we're looking at the most populations that are in need, okay? So, once again, think before you speak, Mr. Patterson, because the amount of disrespect you just show to each one of us when it comes to saying that we're going to continuously provide funding for them even into college, yes, and if we need to, when they graduate college and if they need supportive services, then like the county manager said before, they can go to social services and receive additional support if that's something they need and something that is necessary. But we're not going to stop providing people with resources, providing people with funding when they're in need just because you come up here and think that we should be cutting people off. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Roll, Commissioner.
Okay. I would like to ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions 2024-205 through 2024-242. So moved.
Second.
A motion was made by Vice Chairwoman Leon, seconded by Commissioner Bodak. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak.
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisfort.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Chairwoman, you have nine votes in the affirmative on all resolutions.
Thank you. At this time, we will provide our Commissioner comments and updates. I will start with Commissioner Bodak.
Union County Clerk Joanne Mujapi will host a notary public training seminar at the John H. Stambler Police Academy at 1776 Raritan Road in Scotch Plains on Friday, April 12, 2024, from 8:45 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. The featured speaker will be Union County First Deputy County Counsel Mustaf Esquire. Space is limited to the first 50 registrants. The registration deadline is Wednesday, April 3, 2024, until the openings are filled. A registration fee of $10 includes a late breakfast and is required in advance to secure registration. The seminar will cover the notary public application process and new legal requirements and responsibilities. It will also cover the steps for proper notarization and other topics, including how to complete a notary journal and how to examine identification documents. To register, use the downloadable form of the county clerk website, ucnj.org/county-clerk. And for more information, please contact Anna Lima at 908-527-4787. That concludes my remarks, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Dellisfort.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Union County Board of County Commissioners announced that they are seeking residents who would like to apply to volunteer with the Union County Rape Crisis Center. Volunteers at the Rape Crisis Center provide guidance and support for victims of sexual violence. The spring training dates will take place from May 2 to June 25 on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Bilingual volunteers are also welcome and encouraged to register. While no previous experience in counseling is required, all those interested must be a Union County resident, be at least 18 years of age, have personal mode of transportation, have a valid driver's license, undergo a personal interview, and participate in a 40-plus-hour state-mandated training program. Training sessions are held at the Rape Crisis Center offices located in the Colleen Fraser Building at the Union County Complex, 300 North Avenue East and Westfield. The Union County Rape Crisis Center is a program of the Union County Department of Human Services, Division of Individual and Family Support Services, and all volunteers are trained, mentored, and supported by professional Union County staff. If interested and/or for more information, please contact the Union County Rape Crisis Center at 908-233-7273, or via email at rcc@ucnj.org by April 22nd this year. Finally, I'd like to wish all of those of Irish descent a very happy St. Patrick's Day. Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mirabella.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Last, we got the pleasure of joining colleagues yourself, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Leon, Commissioners Bodak, Dellisfort, and Kowalski on a full tour of the Union County Vocational Technical Schools in Scotch Plains. Students and teachers from the school were there and very gracious enough to give us an in-depth look at the truly unbelievable daily tasks and accomplishments. Even saw some welders that were there, were very impressive, and that the cars that they were shooting off that they designed and engineered, it was amazing. And I know they were off last week into a robotics competition, and I wonder if we know the results of that. Hopefully, we'll find out. A few special students were also honored with resolutions from the county in honor of National Career and Technical Education Month, Future Farmers of America Week, as well as recently those who participated in the U.S. Congressional App Challenge. Special thanks goes to Superintendent Gwen Ryan for organizing that parade. I'm sure several of us that have been around for a while learned something new, and some of our new Commissioners got a chance to walk around the camps and see all the good work that's going on there, so it was time very, very well spent. Also time well spent was at the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Commissioner Dellisfort wished everybody an upcoming happy St. Patrick's Day, but last weekend was the parade in Union, and I give the parade committee always a lot of credit, the General Chairman, the Adjutant, and also the Grand Marshal for all their work putting on a great parade, although it was wet and cold, still was fun. So it was nice, and a lot of people came out standing in the rain to watch the parade, so it was really fun. Earlier today, I had a chance to drop in at Kane University for a law enforcement job fair, spearheaded and kind of worked on by our prosecutor's office, and people looking for careers in law enforcement came out from all over our county, all over the state. In fact, six states were represented there as having tables and talking about careers in their specific law enforcement area, including the FBI and municipal police departments. I was really very pleased to be there. Commissioner Granados, I appreciate your comments, and I thank you for all your efforts. Mr. Patterson, his ignorance knows no limit, and he's reached another new low as far as public comments spewing hate, bigotry, and just demeaning the work of these students who are at Union County College trying to make an education for themselves and trying to do better, and to put them down is really disgrace, and it's just, it's, I shouldn't be surprised, but I continuously am surprised at how low he can possibly go, and that's really frustrating to watch month after month. But I'm sad for you, Mr. Patterson, and you have that point of view because it's contrary to, I think, the good people of Union County. And that will conclude my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Kowalski.
Thank you, Chairman. I also was very happy to join my colleagues at the parade and other events in the last few weeks, and also, all of us participated in Read Across America Week, which was such a joy. We read to hundreds of children collectively, and I want to thank my colleagues for participating, thank the teachers and the schools, and especially the students for inviting us and sharing some learning time with books, and just so impressed to see the students throughout our county and how alert and bright and engaged they are, whatever age. So that was, I think, the high point of my month so far, but who knows, we're not done yet. But on a more practical note, we want to announce that in cooperation with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's radon program, March has been designated Radon Action Month. Radon is a radioactive gas that occurs naturally when uranium and radium break down in the soil and rock formations. It's invisible and odorless. It finds its way into homes through cracks in the foundation and openings around pipes, pumps, and drains. And the County of Union will provide free radon test kits and share information on radon safety and awareness with residents. So the testing is simple and inexpensive, and there are certain radon measurement businesses that also provide testing or do-it-yourself test kits, and the tests can be also obtained from many hardware stores, home improvement stores, or by contacting the Union County Department of Public Safety, Division of Health at 908-518-5620, or 908-654-9730. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to say that, you know, in today's economy, depending on what side of the economic table you sit on, there's an ongoing need for, well, there's an ongoing gap in the continuum of services, and that's relative to employment and training. There are jobs that are out there that are not being filled, and so in cooperation or in partnership with the American Job Center, Union County, we invite all healthcare professionals, and this is where there is a large gap in the system of healthcare. We invite all healthcare professionals seeking new career opportunities...
We invite all healthcare professionals seeking new career opportunities to the Healthcare Job Fair on Wednesday, March 20, at the Warren Akel Sports Center. The Healthcare Job Fair is scheduled for, oh, scheduled for Wednesday, again, March the 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Warren Akel Sports Center located at One Park Drive in Roselle. The Job Fair will feature a range of job opportunities, including registered nurses, licensed practical nurses, certified medical assistants, certified medication aides, certified nursing assistants, and emergency medical technicians. For a list of employers participating and to register for this event, please visit In a commitment to making the recruitment process effective and accessible, the event will provide on-the-spot interviews. Applicants are asked to please bring a copy of their resume, and for more information, please call 908-527-4373. And that concludes my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In celebration of Women's History Month, Union County, in collaboration with the 102nd Cavalry Family Readiness Group, is pleased to announce the initiation of a special collection drive to support military women from our area currently serving overseas. The collection effort will run through March 30 and aims to gather essential items that will bring comfort and convenience to our brave military women. For a list of the diverse range of items that are being collected, please visit our website, ucnj.org/whm, or take a look at our social media pages. We have three Union County, no, four, Union County drop-off locations between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, so all over the county, right here at our administration building, 10 Elizabeth Town Plaza, at our social services building, 342 Westminster Avenue, right here in Elizabeth, at our public safety building, 300 North Avenue East in Westfield, and at our engineering building, 2325 South Avenue in Scotch Plains. So again, we have drop-offs conveniently located everywhere in our county. For more information, please contact Jennifer Erdos from the Union County Office on Women at 908-527-4216, or email jerdos@ucnj.org. Thank you all so much, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Granados.
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to announce the return of the Fresh Start Program for 2024 season, another program that helps out residents in need across the County of Union. It will begin with its first visit to the Lizard Public Library on Thursday, April 4, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. with a first-come, first-served basis. This is going to be taking place throughout the 2024 season, once a month, at the Lizard Public Library and the Plainfield Public Library. In addition to the shower services, laundry services, we also have different departments in attendance, including Department of Human Services, who provide in-person guidance on additional programming resources. If you want more information, please call the action line at 908-677-5405, or you can visit our county website at ucnj.org. And just also today, myself, the Director Debbie Anderson, had the opportunity to visit our Union County Job Fair when it comes to jobs at the airport, and it's a collaboration between the Workforceodyne Board, AJC, American Job Center, Union College of Union County, New Jersey, and the Port Authority. We had over 1,000 individuals come to this job fair here in Union County, and it just goes to show the amount of services we're providing, but also the amount of job opportunities that we have, with over 15 to 20 different job vendors there at one location, providing on-the-spot job interviews, but also having those individuals who are currently in the job looking for another job might be interested in the whole airport, Port Authority opportunities. So I just want to thank AJC, Department of Human Services, for their work in making sure they are providing additional job opportunities for our residents. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. County Council, Bruce Bergen.
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Chair.
County Manager Oatman.
No comments, Chair.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of myself and the Union County Commissioners, I would like to wish every phenomenal woman out there, especially the ones that are working here at Union County, a happy Women's History Month. I would also like to thank all the staff that has worked tirelessly throughout the month to acknowledge every woman that works at the county and all the women contributions that have been made throughout history. That's all for me tonight. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you. So in honor of Women's History Month, the theme of Union County's Women Who Are Making History, we are excited to open nominations for the 2024 Union County Shiro Award. The purpose of this award is to recognize and celebrate outstanding women in our community who embody the values of equity, diversity, and inclusion, leading positive change right here in Union County. To nominate a deserving Shiro, the nominee must be at least 18 years old, residing in Union County, and have made significant contributions to speaking out for equity, diversity, and inclusion. Visit www.ucnj.org/women, then simply upload a photo of your nominee and provide a paragraph outlining the remarkable contributions. Remember to keep it under 200 words and make sure it aligns with the award's theme. We encourage you to submit supporting documentation highlighting specific examples of your nominees, advocacy, and leadership. The deadline for nominations is May 3, and we will unveil the 2024 Union County Shiro Award winners in May. For more information, you can contact Jennifer Erdos from the Office, from the Union County Office on Women at 908-527-4216, or by email at jerdos@ucnj.org. And I would again like to thank Dr. Hargrove and Dr. Siegel for being here again tonight and speaking on behalf of just another partnership that we have. Again, the work that you guys do, I know a lot of us spent some time last week on the campus, and the work that you do for these students, that some of them are there for a second chance, some of them are there to just get their bearings together before they move on to their next institution, and you're changing their lives every day. So we really appreciate all that you do, and it's a partnership that I know, I speak on behalf of the Board, we are so proud of. So thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. I also want to recognize Commissioner Williams, who last Thursday evening received the Social Justice Award from the Women's Political Caucus of New Jersey.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
I appreciate it. And Commissioner Dellisford was able to make it to the event, and I think she had a good time, too. Thank you all.
Well deserved. And I join my colleagues in saying that Read Across America has been really wonderful. It's been great just getting out there and meeting with our students who have so much excitement and enthusiasm for being part of Union County's family, and it's always a highlight for me and I know for my colleagues as well. And I also want to wish everyone a happy St. Patty's Day this weekend. And with that said, can I have a motion to...
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
So right.